We'll reconvene in legislative session 2023-14 for Wycomico County Council, July 18, 2023. Next item on the agenda for the open work session is a proposed special legal counsel request. Mr. Lufman is here and Mr. Wilber. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You have the floor, Mr. Wilber.
All right, so as I think everyone in the room knows, we have interpretation disputes about the charter and the code between the executive and the council. Hopefully, we could find a way to resolve that, but at the moment, it doesn't look like that's apparent, we'll say. So, the idea would be to have a judge make a decision as to what is the appropriate interpretation of the charter and the code. And per this resolution I drafted, it was saying that we, as our law firm, my law firm, as county attorneys, we can't do it because, per the charter, we have to do legal work for both the council and the executive. And it requests that Bill Hudson, who's an attorney in Worcester County, be approved as an attorney to represent the executive. Obviously, Mr. Mitchell is representing the council. And we then can have this presented to a circuit court judge and get an interpretation that everyone can abide by. And that's a summary of it.
Questions from council members. Josh?
What if the circuit court judge says, "Go figure it out on your own"? I mean, what if they dismiss it? What if they... Because I remember us being in a similar situation not that long ago.
Well, in all likelihood, no circuit court judge in the lower shore would be involved in something like this. One would probably be assigned by the court from either the upper shore or from across the bay. And as far as predicting what a judge may do with it, it's hard to do that.
I do remember us getting a... I do remembering it's something along the fact of it being said that, you know, one, we can't sue ourselves. Now, I don't know if that's true, but obviously, not to that degree. But years ago, when we were in a similar situation, there was questions along those lines. So, I guess above all else, I'm just making sure that we feel confident that we will get... That this will be a process that we will arrive at a better conclusion, or at least a conclusion that we can all...
I would certainly hope so. I mean, we're asking... We have two different interpretations, we might say, on the table of charter and code sections. So, Judge, interpret the section for us.
Paul, how can it be such a difference in interpretations when it's spelled out so clear in our charter that it has to be done in a legislative session, and that was never sent to us? How can there be... How can you... And I'm going to ask your opinion now. How can you say that you don't agree with our charter? It's very plain. In 2016, you know, it was added to our charter, and I'll read this, "To amend the county charter to extend the time of the council to act to confirm or reject any appointment by the county executive director administration, the head of a department and executive branch, or a member of the board of commissions from 30 to 40 days, 45 days from submission, and to require submission at a legislative session of council." It's so clear. I don't understand where you're coming from on this, you know?
As I said, in my opinion, it's what is a submission? You know, is the submission the job description plus the resume, which is what was submitted? Or does a submission require the executive to produce a resolution in addition to...
Well, it's pretty clear that that's what it says. The language at legislative session was added to our charter 315 at a 2016 referendum. You know, it was so clear.
And it... Mr. Wilber, it says, "In legislative session," a submission in legislative session. You can worry about what the definition of a submission may be or not, but the crux of the issue is "in legislative session." That means it has to be done at this table. And that was done for a reason, specifically because the prior executive had dropped a paper off and the council off and said, "Oh, well, I did it on June 3rd." And so, I don't know what day it really came in. So, the council went to great lengths to change that. Now, your opinion, I was really concerned about, Mr. Wilber, I really was, because there is the premise that it says "at legislative session by the county executive." That is very clear. That doesn't change whatsoever. But when you made your opinion, when you defined your opinion, you referenced that the county executive must submit the name of an appointee to the council. This is in your opinion. But your opinion doesn't say "in legislative session," which is the primary issue. Your opinion doesn't say that, not in step one. And then in step two, when you say, "The county council can either act to confirm or reject any appointment at its legislative session," it's not referencing what we do in legislative session. It says when the submission is presented. And you ignored that in both of your two opinions. And I found that very surprising. I think, you know, you're asking for an attorney to come in here. Really, I think that the opinion needs to be reevaluated. And did you... In your opinion, let me ask you another one. Did you review the minutes from the prior council before we actually presented the charter amendments to make this the statute?
But back in 2016, 2018, whenever it was?
Yeah.
No, I did not look at those minutes.
But I would think that if you're going to research an issue, that that should be part of your research. The minutes from... The one set of minutes that we have here clearly says, and I'll read it to you, it says that...
When are those minutes?
I have a copy. I'll provide it.
You have a copy?
Okay.
But in the body of this, it says that we were worried about... Initially, it was a 30-day deadline. We wanted to make it a 45-day deadline so that we could have more time. The council could have more time. And they said, you know, in the documentation, it says they had a nominee submitted to council for a department head, and then there was a snow day, so they didn't have enough time, et cetera. Mr. Kilmer said he thought it was very rushed. He said the request was not submitted at a council meeting, and they missed a council meeting. It goes on to say, "Mr. Kilmer said there was not any time to debate on the merits of really... of talking to the individual in person." Then, Mr. Cannon then read the following sentence, "The county executive shall submit any appointments during legislative session of the county council." He then added that what is the intent of that sentence? And Mr. Kilmer said, "Before the request was submitted to the county council." And he is not sure if there is a formal submission process because the executive office is bringing the requests over to the county administrator and saying, "This is who I recommend." So, the proposed change is for the clock to start at a council meeting, so the council members know about the request, and it is made public. This is the set of minutes, the original set of minutes. Them... And because we need to know what the intent is. And then on the second set of minutes, it says, "Mrs. Hurley said section 315 is changing the requirement for the county council to confirm or reject appointments submitted by the county executive for the director of administration or department heads, as well as appointments to boards and commissions from 30 days to 45 days. This section is also adding the requirement for the submission of said appointments to be at a county council legislative session."
Uh huh.
Again, I mean, this is basic research as to whether you have to define what the intent is. And there was a third set of minutes where this section is also adding the requirement for the submission of said appointments to be at a county council legislative session. Over and over again, that's what has been repeated in the history of Wycomico County through this council. And I think if you read this, you have to understand what the intent is. So then, similar as to what Joe just said, when you read the actual charter, that is exactly what it says. It must be submitted in a legislative session by the county executive. You ignore that in your opinion. And I don't know how you can ignore that in your opinion, Mr. Wilber, because that is the crux of this whole argument. And yet, now you're asking us, the council, ironically, to approve an attorney to try to justify what we consider to be an invalid opinion to begin with. I think we need to reconsider, based on those minutes, not only what the intent of the council was, but what is truly listed as in the charter as the requirement. And I would simply say that I think you really are... Your firm needs to reevaluate whoever prepared this opinion, and you go back to the table and the drawing board and say, "Maybe we need to reconsider what we've done." Similar to what Joe says, what confounds me and what I absolutely cannot understand is how we're discussing this issue when it is probably one of the most simple legal issues I've ever dealt with in my life, you know, even as a novice. So, that's pretty much what I wanted to bring to the table to you. I don't know how it can be any more clear, or we need five, or six, or 10 more attorneys to tell us what we think is terribly obvious in the charter as it is today.
Well, it's not as clear to me as I think it is to you.
In what sense, I might ask, though? Because your opinion never states "in legislative session submitted by the executive." Your opinion doesn't state that.
Right. When the executive brings in the resume and the job description and presents it to the council.
Under what? A closed session, an open work session, or legislative session?
It's the executive's job to present the appointment to the council. So, is that a submission? That's my first point.
You say present it... I'm sorry to interrupt you. I need a clarification. When you say presents it to the council, when? When?
The... I believe in the case of the assistant director of administration, that was presented, and then the council scheduled it for a closed session, say, within the next couple of weeks after that.
Let me say that's not correct. She requested a closed session.
She requested?
Or Bunkie actually requested it.
Okay. Fine.
We also, though, and I'm going to allow Paul to do most of their talking, we also, though, just requested an open session for Tim Bosman to be on the council. This just happened a couple of weeks ago. And I'm not sure how you set the agenda, was it council president, whatever, but that turned into a closed session. We did not request a closed session on that. We don't have the power to tell you whether you do a closed or open session. All we can do is make a submission, and then the legislative body determines whether that's closed or open. All we can do is make a request.
Bunkie, there are no restrictions on whether the council chooses to have an open, a closed, or legislative session discussion. The key element of this is that the executive is required to submit any of that in a legislative session. And for Mr. Bowman, it was presented... Or Bosman, it was presented and submitted in an open legislative session. So, that was the proper process.
Our original request was an open legislative session, which then turned into a closed session without us requesting it.
You don't have to request that.
So, what I'm saying is you have the inherent power to have an open or closed session as a council.
Excuse me, Laura.
Mrs. Hurley.
And to follow up to that, Bunkie, you are correct that the original request was an open session, but once council gave the consensus to move forward with it, your office submitted another request for a legislative session.
And it was submitted in legislative session.
See, this is the thing I don't understand.
You can't play games with this guy.
You can't... You can't walk in... You can't walk in front of a group of people and do the same thing over and over and over again the right way, and then do it the wrong way, and expect the same results. How can you... How can you expect... We approved 30-some people, 32, 34, that you submitted the correct way. And then you turn around, and these two were not submitted the correct way, and you're angry about it. And I don't understand that. I mean, you can't... This was written... This was written on this ballot very simply. And we tried to explain... Put it on the ballot as simply as we could, because we heard a lot about it, you know, over the years, you know, what's these ballot questions mean. It was put on there so anybody could understand it. Any person out here, any voter, requires submission at a legislative session. It wasn't done.
The council also just did five resolutions that did not come from the county executive's office and voted on them.
We don't have to do that.
Mr. Lufman, if you read the resolutions, as Mr. Mitchell had expressed to Mr. Wynn earlier in our meeting today, if you read it, we specifically, in the body of the resolutions, state the fact that we recognize the fact that this was not done properly. But as a safeguard measure, we are still going to pass these resolutions because we feel it's incumbent upon us to protect the... To protect the interests of the citizens of Wycomico County. So, we recognize that in each one of those resolutions, that nothing had been presented properly. It's not as if we condoned it. Mr. Wilber, again, in your opinion, you have a statement here that says the first question... This is your opinion. It says the first question is whether the county executive submitted the appointment to the county council.
Uh huh.
Your statement. And then follows up with saying, "The facts set forth above show that the county executive submitted the assistant director of administrative appointment to the council by memorandum." That contradicts the charter. That contradicts the argument. I don't understand how your opinion... In your own opinion, you state that it was submitted by memorandum, not in legislative session.
So, when you submit... When the executive submits for an appointment, I think still the question is, what constitutes a submission, regardless of when it goes in? In terms of a timing thing, it looks like the procedure is there's a submission by the executive. That may or may not go to closed session. That's the council's choice, whether it goes to a closed session. It can go right to legislative session. Council choice.
It has got to be... It is not a submission. The submission is not the issue. It's the legislative session. That's the trigger. That's what triggers the 45 days. The submission doesn't trigger the 45 days. The legislative session triggers the 45 days. The nature of the submission is irrelevant.
I would like to read something, and maybe when I read it, it might make more sense. I just... I'm just going to read this. Okay. So, it says, "Confirmation by the county council."
Let me ask you what you're reading from.
I am reading 315A. I'm reading this last half of it.
Why don't you read all of it? Because if you pass it, it might not have the same...
Director of administration, assistant director of administration, department heads, and the initial appointment of deputy directors. Appointment by the county executive of the director of administration, the assistant director of administration, department heads, or the initial appointment of a deputy director of a department in the executive branch of the county government shall be subject to confirmation by the county council. If the county council fails to act... Fails to act to confirm or reject any appointment within 45 days of its submission to the county council, comma, at a legislative session, comma, by the county executive, comma, the appointment shall stand approved. So, I see exactly what John's saying, but also, I see exactly what the executive's saying. I think what we have is an interpretation problem of what this means. Does this mean submission at legislative session? If so, then we probably should get rid of that comma and say that exact words. And maybe that's something we should do going forward, just to clear this language up. But that's just something that I read. And maybe that's why you have your opinion the way you have it. I don't want to, you know, say that you have a bad opinion or anything. I don't want to say anything like that. But maybe that's a good reason to get a individual, a separate lawyer, just to clarify this language, and so we can move forward and get away from this.
James, you didn't read the amendment to it. There's an amendment to that.
Well, it's not on the internet.
Well, you know, the internet ain't always right.
What's the amendment say, John?
I just read it. I'll read it again. "To amend the county charter to extend the time for the council to act to confirm or reject any appointment by the county executive or the director of administration, the head of a department and the executive branch, or a member of a board or commission from 30 to 45 days from the submission, and to require submission at a legislative session of council." That's an amendment to what you're reading. That's old news there, okay?
To me, that's crystal clear.
Right. Well, that makes sense. I get that. What I'm saying is that's not what is... That's not what I was aware of, you know? I'm reading...
Well, now you are.
I just feel like we need to update our website if that's the case.
Mr. Hawley read the ballot question.
Yeah, that comma situation, when you get to that first comma, it says "at a legislative session," that's saying when it has to be submitted. The next comma is saying who has to submit it.
Right.
So, it's saying it has to be submitted by the executive at a legislative session. And this statement that it's up to the council as to whether it's closed or open, yes, to some extent, that's true. But the procedure that's been followed by almost... Not quite all of them, because some, like Mr. Wilber, was a... Had no closed session, but has been that there's been a request for a closed session. It's a meet and greet, and then there's a request for a legislative session in which the vote is taken. Thirty-three times that was done, and twice it wasn't.
Yeah, that's the thing here, is when the council disagreed with any recommendations, that's when all of a sudden, we decided to begin to, in my personal opinion, to subvert the process and try to figure out some way by means which that anything could be done to split hairs that might try to achieve that goal. But I think that's terribly wrong for the citizens of Wycomico County. I think it's very terrible for the two individuals specifically who have been brought into this. It's impacted their family. And Mr. Wilber, even your opinion, you know, in my impression, the executive branch is depending on your opinion to support their case. And that opinion itself impacts every citizen in Wycomico County, as well as these two individuals who actually, by the time this comes, could be liable for what has occurred here, based on section, I think, what is it in the code? Section 59 or?
Chapter 59.
Chapter 59 of the code. They could be held liable for this, Mr. Wilber, and they're depending on your opinion to help show them what I would consider the straight and narrow.
Why was this never updated? It says 2016, and we're going on 24 here pretty soon. That's almost, what, how many years is that?
That is the updated. There's a...
No, I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, there's some misunderstanding between what Joe's reading. Joe's reading the ballot question, I believe.
Oh, was so...
And that is what made the change, but the actual change is what you're reading.
So, this is what I'm... Hold on. So, what I'm reading right here, this is what it is right now.
That's what the voter saw when they went to vote on that particular charter amendment.
Okay, but what it says in the charter is not old news. It is what it is. Is that what I'm trying to figure out? Because I'm just...
Correct. That's correct.
Okay, so there's just... There's a huge misinterpretation in what...
It still says "at a legislative session by the executive."
By the county executive.
Hold on. I'm just trying to figure out. What I see online, when I look up the county code, okay, that is old news, or is that new news? The charter. When I look at the charter for 315, right, is that old or new?
If you're looking at the E-code section, I mean, I don't know what...
If I'm looking at... If I'm working at online, section 315A, is that old or new?
That would be the current version.
Okay. Why doesn't it say that in the current version if this is what's on the ballot?
It does say that, I think, is what Mr. Mitchell said.
That's what I'm saying. It does say that.
What...
That was changed...
Why isn't it... I'm looking at online right now, and that's not what it says.
So, just the ballot questions are condensed. It doesn't say word for word what that charter section is. The word for word is in the newspaper advertisement that is actually published before the election. So, the ballot questions are a summary of what is being changed.
I don't know. Commas, all commas aside, Mr. Wilber, I think that when you're saying that...
At its submission to the county.
Any appointment.
At a legislative session.
Comma, at its legislative session, comma, by the county. It needs to be... It says to confirm or reject.
It's the same.
I think that... I don't think you can get away from one issue, seriously. It says it's 45 days of its submission to the county council at legislative session, not in her office, but at legislative session by the county executive.
What I see is confusing.
At legislative session, what's that mean?
Right.
Typically, things are submitted before you actually sit down at the council table.
That's why this is very clear. It says it must be at a legislative session. Submission must be at a legislative session.
But that's not the way it works. Everything that comes up...
It's worked that way for 33 appointments, Mr. Wilber.
But the submissions were made before the legislative session.
Can I just say, this is why it's so confusing, is because...
It isn't confusing.
Well, to me, it's got this... It says to confirm or reject... Okay, hold on. It says, "If the council fails to act to confirm or reject any appointment within 45 days of its submission to the county council..." There's a comma there.
At a legislative session.
Right. And then it says, "At a legislative session."
By whom?
Comma, by the county executive. So, I see what you're saying, but also, I get, you know...
To me, I've read it 20 times.
Well, then, how come we've got the county lawyer saying that he disagrees with that?
Mr. Wilber's opinion, as I stated before, Mr. Wilber, with all due respect, your opinion never addresses the issue of submitting it in legislative session. Matter of fact, the closest you come to that is when you make the comment that it was submitted by a memorandum. You totally ignored it.
Well, I'll clarify it right now. These appointments are not submitted, you know, at the start of a legislative session. They're submitted, you know, a couple of weeks before, at least.
And hers wasn't. They never were. They weren't submitted two weeks before.
Well, what's that goes to? What is a submission?
It doesn't matter what a submission is.
It does.
It didn't come to the legislative session because we never got anything on it. We never got anything about this other than a closed session. That's all we got.
Have you read the 33 submittals? It says, "This is a submission to the county council." And it's put on the agenda, and it is formally announced by Mrs. Hurley. Even if we vote on it the same day, we have two sections that we address. One is the submission formally. Then we vote on the resolution. We don't just vote on the resolution as if that's the submission. We're very careful to say, "This is the submission. This is the resolution."
And if I could jump in here a minute, if I can just say this. To some extent, Mr. Wilber is correct. It's being given... I'm not going to use the word "submitted." It's being given to Ms. Hurley to put it on the agenda. That is not the submission. The submission is when it gets on the agenda, and you show up at the legislative session, and then that is being submitted. Lots of things can be on the agenda for one reason or another. A person doesn't show up, they're not taken up, or something happens in the meantime. So, that memo is saying, "Please put this on the agenda so that I can submit it at the session." That's what it's all about. Then Bunkie or somebody comes in and says, "Here's the person we're submitting."
So, this...
What I'm finding concerning is you guys are coming to us wanting to hire this outside attorney based on Mr. Wilber's legal opinion. And when I first... Well, I guess I still have this position. If you and Mr. Mitchell have issued a legal opinion, you being for the executive's office, Mr. Mitchell being for us, that this is why you think we're right or they're right, I think you should be the one, along with Mr. Mitchell, to represent that opinion and not forward it to another attorney.
Well, you know, that's what I started out with. Under the charter, our law firm represents both branches of government. So, we can't be filing a legal action by one branch of government against the other branch of government, even if it's a legal action asking for an interpretation of a code section. That's why the request for another...
How are you going to be able to give a legal opinion against us, then, if you represent forms of government?
Right. Our law firm can give legal opinions. They're... It's going to be making calls on occasion between the council and the executive. You've got to make a call. Who has this responsibility? Who has this power?
I'm looking at it from a taxpayer's point of view, and I think this is... I think this is wasteful spending. I do. I really do. I mean, I read the language. It's pretty clear to me. I'm not an attorney, but it's pretty clear. You know, we've had 33 other appointments that went smoothly. They were done the correct way. These two weren't.
Yep. I think over the last few years, this procedure that we're discussing has not always been followed precisely.
Maybe you could have stated that in your opinion, but I haven't. I couldn't say for sure.
Well, I think I can cite a couple of examples that I'm thinking of.
I think, you know, you talk... I think, I think, you know, you talk about a conflict of interest, which you may or may not do. I agree with Vice President Baker. I think it's a conflict of interest when you, when you know that there's an issue which is placing the executive branch against the council, and you make an opinion. You should have, I think you should have recused yourself right there. You didn't recuse yourself. You've made this, you've committed yourself to that, and as Shane says, I think that has to follow through in the court of law. It is your opinion that the executive is defending or wants to defend, and I think that needs to be done. If it's going to be done, it needs to be your opinion, if it's done in a court of law.
This is what she's hanging her hat, her opinion?
Mm-hmm. Well, the problem is, it puts our law firm in, in terms of the whole relationship, it puts us in a difficult position if we're in court for one branch versus the other.
Well, I think you've already taken that position.
We've given an opinion.
Opinion. What concerns, what has always concerned me, Mr. Wilber, and I have blamed the prior council for this more times than not. The council should have never changed the authority of oversight on the law department or the county attorney to just one branch of government, which is the executive branch of government. I don't know if the public is aware of this, but, Mr. Wilber, you act and your law firm acts as county attorney under the authority of the executive branch only. So the executive branch has the authority to fire you if they do not like your opinion, and I think that creates an undue pressure on you. I think it creates an undue pressure on your law firm. And I'm just not quite sure. We are getting an unbiased opinion sometimes when we're faced with those type of circumstances.
Couldn't the same thing be said about Andy, though?
It could be.
Andrew Mitchell?
Sure it could be. Yeah.
I mean, like, you know, I think, I don't think Paul Wilber is going to throw his reputation away on that, you know, because he has a pretty big law firm, and this isn't the biggest contract that he has, I'm sure. I'm sure he's got lots of other things going on, but I think, I don't think that he would be, you know, pressured to make an opinion if that's what you're saying.
Per the charter, Andy Mitchell is representing just the council.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So Andrew Mitchell-
Per the charter, we're representing both branches.
Right. Okay. Andrew gives us his opinion, and we can fire him if we wanted to. I don't think we will, but, or would, but same thing could happen, said about you and the executive branch, so.
The executive, if the executive maybe does not, does not like some opinion that's been stated, the executive has the authority to fire him.
Right, right.
That's what I'm saying. So in your deliberate time, in your time of making the opinion, I'm sure after the actions that happened where we didn't approve these people, you had conversations with the county executive privately, correct?
I certainly have talked with-
In the office, with other staff. Did you ever have those same kind of conversations with county council staff? I mean, did we come over, did the law, did Paul Wilber's firm come to Laura and possibly John Cannon or Vice President Baker and say, hey, we've got, you know, I've got this opinion to make, and I'm talking about this with the county executive, and we're here and here, and, you know. Did that ever happen?
The opinion was requested by both the council and the executive.
I understand that.
Okay. As far as having conversations, I'm perfectly willing to have them.
Now, I mean, did you, before the opinion was rendered?
I don't believe I spoke with a particular council person about it.
Or the county, county council administrator?
I don't, so.
All right. The request from me, Mr. Wilber, was a clarification of your opinion, because I couldn't, I could not in any way, fashion whatsoever, understand how you were justifying it, and I asked for a clarification of the opinion. And that's when I got the document that I absolutely can't make heads or tails of as to how you justify it, that a memorandum is a submission in legislative session. That's your argument. I don't see, I don't see where that holds as valid.
I think the way I would sum it up is, at what point does the paperwork presented by an executive amount to a submission?
Well, we know it wouldn't be submitted two weeks before legislative session, so that clock wouldn't start ticking. In other words, if she dropped it off to our office today, and the meeting's two weeks from now, that clock doesn't start ticking today. It's going to start ticking when we, when we come to a meeting.
I think that's part of what a judge would decide, when the clock starts ticking on the 45 days.
It's, Mr. Wilber, how can you not recognize the 45 days starts when the submission's made in legislative session? How is that not, how is that not clear? Here's the situation. I mean, I think you can probably sense very much that the council finds, terribly observed, that we're being asked to spend taxpayers' money to hire an attorney-
That's it.
That will, I'm assuming, is going to take a position for the executive to challenge the council. Why would we even go down that road? What is that really going to result? Are we just going to have, we're going to have probably an attorney that's even more indebted to one branch of government than the other?
Well, what I'm saying is, if there's a court order, then that decides it.
Not necessarily. Somebody can appeal.
Well, yeah, subject to appeal. Always subject to appeal.
Everything's subject to appeal.
And speaking of going to court, does the executive's office have a rough idea what this attorney's going to charge?
This particular attorney would charge $3.25 an hour.
We have a resolution for, to hire an attorney, but you know, giving us a fiscal note as to what it's going to cost the taxpayers of Wycomico County. Is this going to be a $10,000 price tag? Is this going to be a $100,000 price tag? What's it going to be? I don't understand how you can put a resolution on the table for us to authorize hiring of an attorney without a fiscal note. It's irresponsible.
So let me ask. So if, let's just say we don't hire, we don't allow the attorney to be hired. Let's just, let's just say that. Then what? Do we not have a judgment on anything? Does she continue to have the deputy director of administration, and does she continue to have the deputy, acting deputy director of public works? And, because there's no court opinion, it's just you said and what you said, and we don't have any ruling on anything. So how do we, because, I mean, there's a discrepancy here, and, you know, I think a court ruling would clear this right up, but if we can't get to that point, what do we do?
Well, I think it's going to eventually end up in court.
Okay.
May I say something?
Just how long it's going to take?
Um, my nine-and-a-half-year-old great-granddaughter could understand this because it says here clearly, 45 days of a submission to the county council at its legislative session. And I think that it would, to me, be unfair to the taxpayers, for the county executive, to bring charges, I'm going to say charged if you go to court, that means somebody's going to be charged with something, at the taxpayer's expense. And the money that we're spending on an opinion because the person didn't get their way is, to me, childish and unprofessional. You win some, you lose some. And I think that they needed to go back to the drawing board, and by her keeping these people on board after we said no, it's just like you tell a child, no, and they keep trying to pursue it. And I think that going to court is going to cost somebody some money. And personally, I'm not going to prove any money for any court costs for this, because I think it's totally ridiculous.
Mr. Wilber, another part of this issue also, because we're dealing with two different appointments, the deputy director of administration, I believe, clearly comes, clearly comes within this framework of the 45 days, that the council's never going to agree with that. We feel that the proper procedure wasn't followed, without question. The other issue that was, came to light was the fact that we had another individual that is now working for Wycomico County as an acting deputy director.
Uh-huh.
That term, acting deputy director, isn't really recognized anywhere in any Wycomico County documentation as an acting deputy director. You can have an acting director, et cetera, but not an acting deputy director. Now, my question really for you is that originally this employee was an acting director for 90 days, and it's allowed. Closed session was held at the request of the executive, and at that point in time, there, the council sort of came to the conclusion that they did not want to continue on with this individual. And I think in any, any capacity whatsoever as, as acting or the 90-day extension. So in a sense, we were looking for, you know, maybe for someone else, period. After that, no submission was ever made to the council regarding this individual. But surprisingly, to everyone, all of a sudden, this individual was appointed as an acting deputy director, okay? So as an acting deputy director, I'm going to assume that that individual, and Bunky, you may be able to answer this, that individual is somewhat in that role now as an acting deputy director, sort of to assume the responsibilities since we don't have a director or a deputy director? Would that be that responsibility of that individual?
She's the acting deputy director, so that's, that's her title, and that's what she does.
So, in other words, she is assuming the responsibilities and the duties that would normally be for a deputy director or a director?
For, since she's acting deputy director, it'd be of deputy director.
Okay, so she's assuming those responsibilities. What concerns me, and I will read this to you, from county code, okay, section 59. And it says in here, if a person has been discharged, and I think it's a discharge, when you say, when the name is presented before this council, I don't care if it's closed, open, no matter what, but when a name is presented and the council says through consensus, it's not going to work, the individual has been automatically placed in an acting deputy director position because the executive recognizes that the council has rejected the extension of the 90-day requirement. So knowing all this, the position is now in, employed, employed as a supervisory capacity. And yet, chapter, section, code, section 59 in the county code states, if a person has been discharged from a position for which confirmation by the county council is required, he or she shall have no de facto power or other authority to continue to serve or act in that position, and may not do so or exercise authority of such a position, either generally or in the supervision or management of a department or agency of the executive branch that is assigned or attributed to that position by the charter. That's very specific. They're saying you can't even, de facto, you can't even take on that role in general. You can't even walk into the department and act as if you have some supervisory capacity over another. That's a violation of the county charter. And it goes even further in 5917, talking about penalties. A person who continues to act in violation after being notified the county council in writing to cease and desist, which is what we did in the legislative process with the five resolutions, after being notified to cease and desist, and a county official or employee who knowingly authorizes such contact, conduct, that could be the executive, that could be the finance director, that could be the HR director, any county official or employee who knowingly authorizes such conduct shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and subject to a fine not to exceed $1,000. Such authorization shall be grounds for removal by the council from elected or other county office. These are some pretty strong statements that the county code put into place to make sure that we were following all the legal processes that were necessary.
Here's the other issue with that. Do you realize the liability that you're possibly putting the county in by having a person in that position without being appointed?
Driving around in county cars?
Cars, you know, if they, if they tell some, say they go out here and told somebody to get in a truck and drive it somewhere, and they didn't have the proper license, and they hit and killed somebody. I mean, there's a dozen different scenarios. You talk about going to court. Lawyers would have a field day with that statement against the county if they found out that this person that was supervising these people that got hurt on the job or hurt somebody else. You know, lawyers would have a field day in making the county liable for that, so.
Insurance company isn't going to cover it.
That's, that's my concern, is insurance providers, if they wreck these county vehicles, and they find out that this dispute's going on, and they believe the council was correct, that these people shouldn't be in those positions, is the insurance company's going to cover the losses? Do we, do they have coverage?
You have two individuals driving vehicles right now, I assume. Is that right, Paul? Yeah, they have company vehicles. The company vehicles, one of them, the council doesn't even recognize as an employee of Wycomico County. You don't think the insurance company recognizes what's going on there? So they injure somebody. Let's say unfortunately they injure somebody. Let's say it's a debilitating injury where that person could be in a wheelchair for life. Citizens of Wycomico County are being held liable for that, and don't think they aren't.
What about if it's not even in a vehicle? Are they covered under workers' compensation if they get injured on the job?
Paul, I answered that question, and I have a question for you.
Okay. Well, the point I was going to make is, that legislation that's, was put in place in chapter 59, there's a question whether that is legitimate legislation based on the charter. You know, the charter is the constitution, the code is the code, and it's supposed to flow from the charter. That opens up a whole nother legal issue. And I agree with you, that legislation is very strong, the punishments in it are very strong.
Right.
Are they legally valid pieces of legislation? I think that can also go to a court.
Now, Mr. Wilber, do you realize what the common denominator here is, is that we're not supposed to believe what we read? That's the common denominator in every argument so far that we've heard. There's four sections to this code, four sections. Some people went to great length to make sure that this is exactly what the public wanted, and in the best interest of the public and the county as a whole. I just can't, I just, when I buy into the fact that we're not supposed to believe the words that we read on the page.
It's a shame that it's gotten to this point.
Shouldn't have been.
It is.
We shouldn't be here. This should not be a topic of discussion.
Paul, I have a question for you. So we have nine executive branches and nine executives in the state, right, something like that? I wonder, I don't know, maybe you could look into this, and maybe what their processes are for hiring directors and deputy directors, just because I'm, you know, I want to defer, obviously, the charter is top that we follow, but above that is the Maryland State Constitution. I just want to make sure that maybe, maybe we're infringing a little bit. I don't know, because the, like I said, I stated last time, the Eighth Declaration of Rights is that our two forms of government need to be distinctly different, the executive and the legislative branch. And I just, I just don't want to see our, our branch intertwining too much because we're manipulating the charter and the code more and more to fit what maybe we want, but maybe not what the Maryland State Constitution intended it to be. And I'm just, I'm just saying, just be devil's advocate here, because we've got, we've got to do that, and we've got to do our due diligence and see what other counties may have. And we're not the only executive form of government. And, you know, I wonder, do other counties have this same problem? And maybe, maybe we can piggyback off of maybe what other counties have done to help clear up the language and disputes that we have, because this has got to stop. And I just want to make sure that we are staying in our, in our lane. And I get the balance of power, I get the checks and balances, but at the same time, we need to, if we have a qualified candidate, we need to either approve or not approve. And if we don't approve, we ought to give some sort of an explanation of why we're not approving these people, instead of doing it in closed session, because the executive doesn't know why we said no to these people. Bunky has no idea why. Paul has no idea why. I have an idea because I was in the closed session, but no one else knows. And I think that's not fair to the public, because we're only showing one side of the story here. And I just, I think we need to maybe defer back to the Maryland State Constitution and maybe do some research on what other county executive form of governments have done in their counties.
I think what other counties do is irrelevant at this point. What's important is that we follow our-
But if we're not following the Maryland State Constitution-
Every piece of legislation is vetted by our attorneys, and every piece of legislation that's vetted by attorneys, they make certain that it does not conflict with Maryland statute.
It's our job to follow that charter.
That's, that's how we do it.
I'm just, hey, listen, I'm just being devil's advocate here. I think we need to, we need to at least maybe do some more due diligence on this. And, you know, if we can't get a lawyer, a lawyer to do this in court, I mean, this is just going to, we're just going to be talking about this for a couple more months. Maybe, maybe for the rest of the year. And to bring this back to the reason we're here today, Mr. Wilber feels him and his firm are conflicted to represent the executives in this dispute, this disagreement over wording in court. And so the-
And so, the executive feels we need an outside counsel to do this. So, that's why we're here today, not to adjudicate what a court of law will adjudicate. So, I don't know if that's something that you vote on today or in a future session, but that's really why we're here, not to adjudicate the case.
Actually, to point out something that keeps coming up, this is not a legislative session. So, there is no vote.
It's just consensus, it's a work session.
I know, but that's sort of part of the problem, right? I mean, just what he just said.
Right.
You're going to vote on it? No, we're not, it's not a legislative session.
So, Mr. Wilber, would the county have the availability, or the council, not the county, to give the green light for your firm? You're saying it's a conflict of interest. Well, if we allowed it, could you represent the executive's office?
You could say.
I do feel that the executive should have an attorney, but I don't feel like we should hire outside counsel. I don't think we should spend that kind of money. It's taxpayers' money, you know, you're her attorney, and that's.
He's the county attorney, he's not the executive.
I would have to have the agreement of the council to represent the executive on this point, you know?
Paul would have no problem with it.
So, we could file what could be construed as a conflict of interest waiver?
That's what I'm describing. Yes, yes, that can be done. The issue would be, we work on a lot of subjects for the county, and the county and the executive are involved in those subjects. And you don't really want to taint that relationship over a litigation. And so, it can be done, yes, but I wouldn't want it to taint the overall relationship.
We've been in and out of a lot of catfights with you, Mr.
Oh, I know, it's true.
Yeah, yeah, we still, we still get along.
To me, you know, I can separate it, but I ask each of you, would you be okay to separate it?
Yeah, I can say.
That's, that's where it is.
So, I guess, I guess, last thing, last thing I'll say, is it worth all this when, when you know in the future, however the court, the judge rules, when the judge rules, okay, the judge rules in our favor, the council's favor, okay? Somebody's got to pay the money back that's been paid to these people because they've been paid illegally, if the judge rules in our favor, okay? Who's going to do that? Is the person that hired these people and approved them to be hired going to pull the money out of their pocket and pay them back? Pay the county back, the taxpayers back? People that got the money that's been working, they're not going to give it back. So, somebody's got to pay it back, okay? And that's something we should make sure of when we go to court, that that's a stipulation. If we win, the taxpayers of Wycomico County get paid back for the people that's been hard and, hard and properly, if we win, okay? If we lose, and these people work for the county, then you've got the situation of there not being trust amongst the council and the two people because we haven't approved them. And we still have these other underlying issues out there that's going along with this. So, there's no, there's no winning here if we go to court, one way or the other.
I hear you.
And the taxpayers are the ones that lose.
And it's like, the last sentence that I put in one of my opinions was, what I think we need is a clear step-by-step procedure for these appointments. You know, I think, to me, there's ambiguity. I don't, to John, no, but to me, yes. And I just, I just think that's, that helps move us for the future.
For the future, but we're talking.
But it doesn't deal with these two situations we have right here.
Didn't 33, didn't 33 appointments kind of set a precedent on how it should be done?
I think.
We did it that way for 33 times.
Okay, but if you go back, you know, since the charter amendment, I think there's been other ways it's been handled.
We could go back to, what, 1867?
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying since the charter amendment.
We're looking at the 33 appointments made by the current executive, that's the precedent, made by the current executive. I don't think we want to base any of this on maybe prior executives. Now, let's see what, where we are with the current executive and how the law has been followed.
Well, I think with the prior executive, you know, the same charter amendment was in place.
It stood.
And things weren't always handled the same way.
You know, we keep talking about the 45 days, but I think we need to also get back to this rejection of a 90-day extension. I don't know where your interpretation is on that, but a rejection of a 90-day extension and then for the person to now be working under that same job description that was rejected, doesn't matter about submission or anything because it was never submitted, but it was rejected.
That was about an acting public works director extension of 90 days, which was not approved.
Exactly, correct.
So, then the executive made an acting deputy director of public works.
Let me back up because.
And that was appointed, that position was appointed to, who the council had rejected in the role of a director, and yet now has been submitted to the employees as their supervisor, which is in violation of the code, direct violation of code.
Directly.
Can I just jump in here on the, the acting public, the acting deputy public works director who held the position as acting director for approximately 90 days? The limit on an acting capacity is 120 days. We are past 120 days from January the 1st.
So, there's a, what we're trying to explain, and it may be something that's been overlooked, but I don't think it's something that needs to be, continue to be overlooked as legal counsel. This title of acting deputy director cannot exist, it doesn't exist in any documentation in the county. It can't, it can't be there even as it states in the code, even by de facto or even in general terms, it just can't exist, period.
I think there's been, I think I circulated a table of the, that HR put together of the acting appointments that have been made over the years, you know, recent years. And I think some of those were deputies.
What I'm saying is that if we recognize, if we recognize an error, it needs to be addressed. You don't say that, well, you know, we can continue, we can just operate however we choose to. If we need an acting deputy director of weed control, we're going to appoint one. No, there are processes in place, and if there were bad decisions made in the past, you don't use that, I don't think, as your foundation to continue on with bad governance. You recognize what the law is and you follow it, and that's why we're here today.
Well, I think the question is, that you're raising is, are there deputy, can there be acting deputy directors? I say, yes, there can be. I think you're saying you do not see it that way.
I don't know where you're finding that documentation, whether it's in the charter, whether, I don't know where you're telling me that you have found that position to even exist in the first law manual.
It's not named.
In the control document or in the charter.
It's not, it's not named in the charter, it speaks of the higher offices, the department heads.
What you're suggesting, Mr. Wilber, is that you can have, again, you can have an acting deputy director of weed control, you can have acting deputy director of the restrooms. That's not how this government's supposed to work. It's supposed to be following budgets, it's supposed to be following charters, it's supposed to be following code. And we're making you aware of that, that right now, this position, this one position, couldn't be any more egregious as far as taking the authority that has not been granted.
I think we'll disagree on that one.
I don't understand, I don't understand, you can't see what the code defines.
This is the third county executive that I've served with, I guess you would call it that. And over the years, what I've witnessed is you go along and you get along, fine, everything's good until you disagree. And then the county executive, and this one included, our prior county executives were a little bit that way, then they get mad. You can approve, you can have 500 things come across these pieces of paper and approve 499 of them, turn down one, and that's when the trouble starts. And that's what's happened here.
I disagree, there are things on the agenda tonight, or today, that the county council, they discuss things with director of finance, there were, Tony Rudy was here from the airport, and it was a very, very cordial thing, and I think that.
That we turned down, Bunky.
No, that's what I'm saying, that the function of the government continues in a cordial manner, we just have a disagreement on, we just have a charter dispute. And we can isolate the charter dispute to itself, allow that to be adjudicated, meanwhile, the work of the county government goes on. As evidenced today, when you guys heard from several county employees on several different issues. So, there's no anger, I've heard that a couple of times. We just believe that there's a difference of opinion on a charter, on this, there's a charter dispute.
I want to say this, I think that since we do have this dispute, the county executive should not have kept the people on because we did not confirm them until the dispute was solved. Basically, they put the people in position, like they quoted malfeasance and all them penalties, and you put them in jeopardy of, of not following the code or the charter. And it seems to me that doing so, she's made it difficult for the ones that she has submitted by just blatantly ignoring what the county council did until we did get this settled. So, you just put the people in position anyway, you know? It's just like, say, I'm going to do what I want irregardless of the procedure. And that's, to me, is, I call it disrespectful. How are we going to continue when we have a lot of drama and social media and the newspaper and all this stuff? I've been through this with the city council, and we've been, we were a laughing stock in the state of Maryland. Now, we talked about the Maryland constitution and all that kind of stuff, we were the laughing stock, the city of Salisbury was in laughing stock in the state of Maryland because of the same stuff that we're doing here. And I think it's terrible, I'm not, I'm not going to agree for any extra money for any decision-making when it's right here in the charter. I read it, I understand what it's saying, and just like if you don't get your way, I say it's a highway, I'm going to do it my way. It's either my way or no way. And that's not how government's supposed to work. It's not how government's supposed to work. You win some and you lose some. And that's being a feat, a man or a woman, you accept defeat and move on and try to do the right thing. If you didn't get what you want this time, come back with the proper, do it the proper way. What is wrong with that? And just, that's the only way we're going to work.
Maybe, I think it's unfortunate you feel that way. The county executive agrees with the opinions of the county attorney and has followed those.
I would say, I would like to see us, I think a best way forward would be that we just get two new names put forward, we approve them, and we go on, and no more, no lawsuits, no wasting taxpayer dollars. That being said, Mr. Wilber, as any way, we're not going to some sort of legal issue because if we do not, let's say we do not approve special counsel, and then we continue to have individuals working who are unauthorized from the legislative branch, the one who holds the purse, how do we stop them from working or getting paid? Would we then have to take further steps to make sure that, to illustrate legally that this is a misuse of funds?
Well, I think you've got a legislative bill pending, it's in process right now, that would zero out three positions. And, you know, if that passes muster, say with a court, then that pulls the plug on any further payments.
That's still with a court, right? There's no way we, so what I'm getting at is, is there any ways we're not going to some sort of legal back and forth? I mean, other than the obvious, just put, just forgive the current process, well, you know, I mean, we could easily get, the county executive could today submit two new names if they had one, here's individuals we want to go, the council could move forward and approve, and, you know, and then from there on, we could be very clear about what a good process looks like, everyone could sign off and say, this is great, we love it, we'll even post it behind us so we can all read it and look at it all the time. But, you know, if that doesn't, assuming that doesn't happen, are we then, no matter what, going to court? Are we going to have to?
Like Joe and I were discussing, I think the council and the executive certainly can arrive at a clear procedure that all these questions that are being raised, but that's for the future. For these two that are in discussion, you know, it's, if the executive wants to keep them, then that's a contentious point, it's probably court. If the executive wants to put new names out, then that's a different route.
The executive is not interested in putting new names forward?
So, what happens when we pass this legislative bill that withdraws the funding and they're still in those positions and still getting paid? What recourse do we, you say you represent both the council and the executive's office, what recourse do we have then?
We can, we can cut the funding regardless, Mr. Wilber, of whether or not these positions are supposed to be authorized or not, we still have the authority to cut the funding.
You cut, right, if you cut the funding, then, you know, pending a court decision, the funding's cut.
Why would there have to be a court decision? We have 100% authority to cut the funding. It has no relevance to the employees.
But, say, the court speaks to the legality of that legislation.
In what sense? We are allowed to cut the budget, that's what we're doing. Because in other words, you're saying, we cut the budget and she keeps paying them.
Are you allowed as a council, this is the question, the legal question to me, to, you've got charter-stated positions, those three that are being zeroed, can the government function with those positions zeroed out?
You think that the government is not functioning to its best capacity with the individuals in place as is? That's why, this isn't any case where we're being malicious or vindictive or we want to create conflict. The council, a body of seven, decided that we felt these individuals were not qualified for the position, for whatever reason it may be. But this isn't vindictive in nature, it is our decision. Now, the only other side of that is we have one individual, the executive, who says, no, they are. You can't overlook what the, what the reason is as to why we're a democratic form of government. It's because the public depends on a body of seven who wouldn't have personal vendettas or personal interests. We honestly feel that there's, these individuals aren't qualified. And yet, I don't see why an executive, as a power of one, can say, well, I'm just going to ignore whatever, any of the opinions you have, the seven opinions at this table, because I want them there. This is a really heartfelt concern that we do not feel the qualified individuals are in place, period.
I just, I'm just going to ask Paul, okay? So, let's just say we ask her to provide us new names and she goes along with it, not that she is, but let's just say we asked for that. You know, who is she going to bring us? Because she brought us the candidates that she thought was best for the jobs, and we've given no reason why we're not going to confirm these appointments because they meet the qualifications for deputy director of public works and deputy director of administration. And I'm just concerned that if we, you know, continue down this road and go this direction, how, what is she going, like, I'm just, like, again, devil's advocate, who is she going to bring to us? Because in her eyes, those were the candidates of choice, so we need, are we, do we give her direction on who to hire or is that, you know, is that even legal for us to give her direction on who to hire because it is an executive function? And I get, we got to confirm the appointments, but, you know, where is the line?
Well, the way the charter's set up is the executive does, let's say, puts out a request, gets in resumes, does interviewing, and then submits an appointment. That's the. That's the process. So if the executive wanted to submit somebody new, you'd be going through, the executive would go through that process and then would submit the person.
Right. And then would, would maybe she give us, like, five resumes and we look at them? Because it seems like that's what.
That's not how the process is set up.
Right.
It's, it's set up for a single name.
That's not how, that doesn't mean that couldn't be the process. The county executive could say, hey, here's the, here's the five people I'm looking at. What do you think, county council? And if we pointed in a given direction, we could say, okay, we're all generally in agreement? And then, then they would be officially submitted.
You know, I don't think they do that.
In legislative session.
I don't think they do that for the governor. I'm not saying that, you know, this is.
I'm not saying we're required.
I'm not saying that with the governor, but, you know, like I said, separate and distinctly different, that's not separate and distinctly different. That sounds like we want to run the county government, and we're here as a primary function to legislate. One of the other functions is to confirm appointments, but are we not confirming appointments? I mean, because we don't like the person? Or what's the purpose? I mean, why did we, why did we not confirm these people?
You sat in the closed session.
Yeah, so.
I think you know why we didn't confirm them.
Well.
What we're doing is trying to.
Yeah, but how would the county executive know what the reasoning is, so that she can hire somebody? This is what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, the email that was sent to the county executive for the assistant director said, the last sentence, what the county council thought was important, it's in there.
Did not mean.
A more diverse, a, a broader background in government work.
Well, he had 20 years of law enforcement and government work.
But you asked the reason, that was the stated reason.
But, but, because he was in law enforcement, then that gave him the governmental skill.
Government function, he, I mean, were you there for the closed session?
I was not there, but.
I could tell you, that's probably why we're having problems, because I think people need to know what's up with this person. I mean, why, why are we not confirming him?
Well, I think.
He had, he had the qualifications, is what I'm saying.
James, under no circumstances whatsoever can we reveal personnel matters.
What if he signed a waiver?
No matters whatsoever.
No.
I think it's irrelevant. I think we need to move on.
Yes.
We discuss this.
Can I ask one other question?
Yes.
Bunky, is there an effort right now to find a public works director, ongoing?
Is it being advertised? As far as I know, yes. And I, in fact, I talked to our HR director not too long ago to see if she could find entities, trade groups, that sort of thing, where we could reach out to the engineering community better. And yesterday, Mako had the administrators, you know, meeting that we had, and actually it was someone of a different county, it said, who are you having trouble recruiting? It was correction officers, EMS, police, and engineer. And in fact, one administrator said, anything engineering. So it's across the board, a really difficult, unfortunately, a really difficult position.
Well, we hope, we wish you luck in finding the most qualified individual. Go ahead, Jeff.
Bunky, how many people applied for the deputy director of administration? Was it like 12 or 13?
I believe that's correct. I believe we're, well, no, actually, I think it was higher than that. I think we interviewed, I believe we interviewed 11. I think we had 12 scheduled, but the other person got a job somewhere else.
Okay, so it's not like we don't have somebody else to reach back out to, and, okay?
I don't know why they would, right now, looking at this meeting, I don't know why they would want to come here right now, but, okay.
A consensus from councils, an open work session, do we want to move forward with the appointment? Chaney? Jeff? Chaney?
No, but I'm interested in if Paul can represent the executive's office.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll be interested, if that's the only route we can do, I'd be interested in Paul representing Mr. Giordano, if, if that's the direction that we want to take.
Let's take a clear vote, John. Joe? We are, Joe? I'm not, not, okay. James? Are you interested or not?
I would be interested, yes.
We're talking about in bringing a third party and giving the.
Yeah, just a third party, if that's.
No, no, I'm talking about based on what's on the agenda.
Right. I would be interested in a third party, just for clarifications of this matter.
Just for the appointment of an attorney.
Right, right, yes, yes, that's what I mean, yes.
Chair says no, Mr. Hastings is absent. That's right. So, council has not chosen to move forward on this matter at this time. Oh, hang on a second.
Josh's vote?
Josh, we're, we're taking a consensus here as to whether or not you would want to move forward with the appointment?
No.
Okay.
Right.
That is six to seven, six to one, excuse me. By consensus.
Should we entertain maybe a motion to ask Paul Wilber to represent Ms. Giordano in this, in this case, just to get this over with?
I don't, I would not want to do, I don't, I don't want to take that leap just yet. Let's, I think we need further discussions possibly.
Let's have, let's think about that.
Thank you. Next item on the open work session is, oh, I'm sorry. So that concludes, entertain a motion to adjourn from open work session to go in closed session. Send them a move.
Second.
Thank you, Bunky, thank you, Mr. Wilber.
Thank you.
Have a good day.